All right. Good area.
Still warm day, warm weather.
It was ninety-five. I ain't come in here.
It was, uh, I'd swept through my clothes by eight-thirty, so.
Yes, I don't know what the humidity is or was.
It's terrible.
There used to be an air tank as a, sometimes it stayed. I had plenty of far days, I remember.
Yeah.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, July first, 2019 meeting. My name's Rick Mahalovich, I'm President Pro Tem and I'm presiding in the absence of the mayor. We will start the meeting tonight with a prayer by Councilman Graham, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Lord, fill us with your Spirit and courage, so that we might bring our talents and gifts to this meeting to do the important work for our city. Lord, open our minds to the task at hand. Open our ears to listen to each other. Open our hearts to your will. Heavenly Father, help us to understand that everyone is not going to agree with us tonight with our decisions, but as long as we put you first, everything will be all right. As we approach the fourth day of July, let us all be reminded that this date represents the Declaration of Independence and the birth of the United States of America. Lord, usually we celebrate a birth with showers and gifts. So, Father, in times like these, it is my hope that we can share some love with someone today and the rest of our lives. Bless our servicemen and women, both at home and abroad, that helps to ensure that we have that freedom. Bless this nation, bless this state, but most of all, bless the city of Jefferson. I pray a special prayer for those who were affected by the tornado and flood. Let them know that you are God and God alone. Lord, we thank you for last night laying down, but we truly thank you for allowing us to rise this morning and see yet another day. Help us to understand that you allowed us to wake up this morning, so we could correct what we did wrong on yesterday. In your precious name, Jesus, we pray, amen.
Leading us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order, we'll call please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
Hensley, Hussey, Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Present.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward, Wiseman.
Present.
Okay, I'll call for the adoption agenda minus four A.
Second.
Okay, all in any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item five, public hearings, we have none. Item six, appointments by the mayor, we have none. Presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests.
Not guests.
Okay. We have none. Announcements by our mayor, council, and staff. Any notices from chairs? And there, none there. I have a guest tonight, Chris Shepherd Levy with Salute to America, that I'd like to have him get up and tell us what's going on in the next few days. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, thank you for having me. So, first of all, thank you for your support for Salute to America. We really appreciate everything that the city does to help our event be successful and celebrate our independence in a very positive way. And this year especially, you know, it was a challenging, challenging time here, and so I think it's important that we move forward and we do some celebrations. Had lots of tragedies in the last thirty days, last couple months, but as we move forward, it's important for us to celebrate all the good things that we have. So, just real quick, won't take up a lot of your time, but just wanted to let you know what was going on, July third and fourth. We'll start off July third with the parade, starting right here at City Hall and going through downtown. We'll have the opening ceremony at seven PM, sponsored by Not Not. Then we'll have lots of entertainment in the Beer Gardens, and then also our main stage performer will be Craig Campbell. Lots of different things going on on the fourth, starting about eleven AM, with the Boys and Girls Club drum line at noon, Royal Tigerettes at twelve-thirty, Jeff City Dance Academy. Three o'clock is J. Finney's Hot Dog Eating Contest, that's always a fun one. Come participate. Looking at you, Ron, I'm gonna sign you up. And then, again, lots of entertainment at the Beer Gardens there. And then, just to kind of summarize here, but Super Jam will start performing at seven-thirty, and then we'll finalize the festivities with the Red, White &amp; Blue Sky Concert, and hope for good weather, pray for good weather. Lots of many great sponsors that have supported this, and so we really thank them and couldn't do it without them. And again, you know, thank you to the city for all your efforts and support and contributions. So, we really appreciate everything that you guys do, and hopefully we'll see you on the third and fourth, and wear very few clothes, because it's probably gonna be hot.
Well, thank you for the update, and thank you for your leadership on the committee. Are any questions?
Is that one? What time and date is the parade?
The parade starts, I believe, at five-thirty or six, and I can get that for you.
Line up, six o'clock from our parking light right here.
Right.
Five-thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, and six o'clock, I might add, just to throw out, there will be a banner carried by supporters and elected officials who wants to be involved, J.C. Strong banner, that'll be the last thing in the parade, so all the councils invited to walk behind the banner and show your pride and support for the many volunteers.
I see it on here now, the parade. Eyes are getting bad.
Mine too, that's why I have these.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. No further announcements, we'll go to number nine. I don't know that we have a Lincoln U. update. Anything, Councilman Graham? Okay. Nope. Item number ten, presentations from the gallery, specific bills, resolutions. We do have one person signed up, that's Dan Schmitz, regarding Clark and Dunkland Roundabout. You're welcome to come up and give your name in the microphone and. Thank you, welcome.
Excuse me?
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. I am Dan Schmitz. I'm gonna spend these next few minutes to try to convince you guys to rethink this Clark-Roundabout intersection thing. A lifelong resident of Jeff City, driven through there, I'll give up my age fifty-one years. I've never had a traffic flow issue there. I come off Bald Hill, usually go right toward the highway. I like roundabouts where they're necessary. For example, the one at Ellis and Tanner Bridge was excellent. If you remember, cars used to back up, like maybe all the way to the fire station near Elks before the roundabout. I seen the neat fart, it works well there. But if you drive through the intersection of Clark and Dunkland, often you'll see there isn't a traffic flow issue there. I spent some time over the last few months talking to people that worked for the city, street division, past and present, and some of the council members, and it seems to me like this whole idea was started some years back when Lincoln asked us to vacate Chestnut Street, and that administration is no longer there, and I don't think the current administration is pushing that issue. So, I think what Lincoln was asking then, if we're gonna vacate that, we need to alleviate this additional traffic pressure on that intersection with the roundabout. Since that street never was vacated, there isn't added pressure there, and I don't think the new administration has it in their mind to vacate that street. Also came to my attention that at one time, when Lee's grocery store was there, cars would park right up against Clark, I'm sorry, yeah, Clark, and you couldn't see well looking up toward Bald Hill. But the new building built there, the church, I believe, there's been a curb port which brings the cars back probably a good twelve feet back further, which increases the line of sight. And at the same time, that left-hand turn, which your engineer considers, I guess obsolete sort of is using, I don't feel it's necessary anymore, because you can see well enough looking toward Bald Hill if you're at Dunkland, since those cars are now moved back. The Lafayette ramp's taking a lot of pressure off that intersection. Again, doing away at that left seems to be the whole heart of the matter here. If you read his quotes, he talks about, he kind of supports my cause, he tells us that the volume just isn't there to support a signal. Goes on to say, there are very low-volume times at this intersection, so you wouldn't want a stoplight, because you would be at a red light while there's no one at the intersection. He also goes on to say, the primary concern here is the confusing left-hand turn if you're coming up Dunkland toward Clark, which, I agree, it's kind of confusing, it's one of a kind of thing in Jeff, but again, you can get rid of that and just make a normal left turn there, keep it a two-way stop. There just isn't a lot of cars coming from eastbound Dunkland to Clark, neither is there many coming from the other side, which would be the Cardinal-Houghton Street side. So, I don't see it as an improvement, may even be deterrent, because when you come to a roundabout, you do have to slow more than if it was a straight through, so you're gonna create all the people going north and south on Clark to slow down to take that circle. And it's my understanding they gotta buy that church too, to make room for the roundabout. And looking back, I think when the Lafayette interchange is built, the buildings that were moved there, the people that owned them didn't appreciate them being moved, they felt like they were kind of being ostracized to move their buildings that had been there for a hundred years, like the church that was down at the bottom of that ramp that got moved. So, you're kind of moving another church if you build this roundabout, so I don't think they're gonna like that. We gotta buy the church. Perhaps just a pedestrian crosslight there. I see more pedestrian issue there than I do car issue. A lot of people walk up from the Lincoln area to go across the street, and they'll dart across in front of you there, so perhaps a signal like you have here at Clark or McCarty by the Truman Building, where they walk across there and press a button. That works well, wouldn't cost near as much as one point seven million either. That covers my thoughts on it. Hope I'm not too late, I talked to some people and they said this is already a done deal, so I don't know how all the processes go, but I know you're about to approve a bill with Bartlett &amp; West to design it, so think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schmitz? Yes, Councilman Wiseman.
Yes, thank you. I've also heard some concerns about pedestrians in that area. Where do you think the best place to put a crosswalk would be?
In front of that church, which would be on the south side of Dunkland at the church. Anywhere else, the road gets really wide there, and you'd be walking them through that odd left turn, so if you get rid of that, the narrowest crossing would be to the south side of the intersection of Clark and Dunkland.
Are there pedestrians crossing at any of those other portions of the intersection that you can tell?
Yeah, they mainly cross in the middle of that left-hand turn, because probably less volume there, more gaps to get out halfway and then get halfway and get halfway. That's where I see people staging themselves halfway and then making the other portion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is the consent agenda, accept a motion to accept.
So, move second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion passes. Item twelve, bills introduced. We have item twenty-nineteen dash zero-two-five. Mr. Sanders.
You may read the bill.
After the clerk reads the bill.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter thirty-five, the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana dispensary facilities.
Now, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. The Planning and Zoning Commission, oh, excuse me, let me back up, I always get ahead of myself. This is a standard ordinance that would be amending the existing zoning code regarding medical marijuana dispensaries and transportation facilities. It came through the Planning and Zoning Commission last month and is brought to you, and there will be associated public hearings if it moves forward on July fifteenth. The two major amendments regard transportation facilities, which would support the transport of medical marijuana between either the cultivation, manufacturing, or testing facilities, and also between dispensaries, and between dispensaries, and ultimately the patient requiring the medicine. The transportation facilities are being recommended and suggested by the Planning and Zoning Commission that they fall into the same category as the cultivation, and the warehousing and manufacturing, and the same thousand-foot buffer. The other change, let me just bring up a map here real quick. There you go. Sorry, had my map there. The sort of light pink shows the areas in the M-one, M-two, where the transportation facility would be permitted. The other change regards the retail or the dispensary of medical marijuana. This came before the Planning and Zoning Commission with a recommendation to be included in the C-two district. After a discussion by a citizen and among the Planning and Zoning Commission, they decided to increase that to the C-one district, that's what this map is here. There's more C-two area than there is C-one. The buffer distance would be the same as in the other medical facilities, medical marijuana facilities with a thousand-foot buffer, as someone could lawfully walk between one establishment to another, and there's a variety of how they do that calculation, if it's whether it's in a suite or if it's in a standalone building. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Seeing none, we'll move on to item twenty-nineteen zero-two-six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a preliminary PED plan for property addresses thirty-two fifteen Masonic Court.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. This bill would approve a preliminary planned unit development out off of Masonic Court, which is just south of Truman Boulevard. The property is at the end of the cul-de-sac. The property owner is Rose International, which is located one parcel above it, actually on the intersection of Truman and Masonic Court. They have a lot of employees right now, parking is very horrendous, they park all over the cul-de-sac. The map kind of shows an outline, you can't really see it too well, but there is another facility between that parking lot that they're proposing in their PED plan and the location of their business. The parking lot would hold about a hundred vehicles. It is located as far as from the nearest property line, the closest distance is eighty feet. There's a repairing corridor, it's wooded, and they have allowed for accommodating a future Greenway Trail, which is on our, I believe, the two thousand and seven Greenway Plan as something that is to be considered as future development. With that, there was one letter of correspondence, it's in your packet, from a property owner to the south. City staff called the property owner, and I believe satisfied with the comments, how we addressed them, and they did not come to the Planning and Zoning Commission to make further comments. With that, there's no fiscal impact either, sorry, I forgot that before. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Seeing none, we're moving on to Bill twenty-nineteen zero-two-seven. Clerk?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen, motor vehicles and traffic by the addition of parking time restrictions on Clark Avenue in front of ten-fifteen East Atchison Street.
Brett Smith.
Yes, this bill, as the clerk stated, would create a time-limited parking on about three parking spaces on Clark Avenue adjacent to the property at ten-one-five East Atchison Street. This issue was requested through the Transportation and Traffic Commission meeting, and they recommended approval. Staff be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, we're moving on to item twenty-nineteen zero-two-eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen, motor vehicles and traffic by modifying parking restrictions in the seven-hundred block of Madison Street.
Yes, this bill would extend the two-hour parking time limit on Madison Street to include one additional property, which has recently been converted into an appliance store. Again, this issue was discussed at the most recent Transportation and Traffic Commission. Staff be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, we're. Twenty-nineteen dash zero-two-nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen, motor vehicles and traffic by adding a stop sign to River Bluff Court before entering Hazelton Drive.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, River Bluff Court is a recent addition to the neighborhood at the request of citizens of that area. Staff reviewed the traffic control needs and are recommending a stop sign. This issue was discussed at the Transportation and Traffic Commission meeting, and they have recommended approval of placing a stop sign on River Bluff Court before entering Hazelton Drive. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, we'll move on to twenty-nineteen dash zero-three-zero.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen, motor vehicles and traffic by modifying the no parking area on the south side of South Ten Mile Drive east of Missouri Boulevard.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, we would consider this bill more of a cleanup than anything else. The existing ordinance had the vast majority of this area already as no parking, but it referenced a street name as the ending point, which does not exist. This current bill would restrict parking on the south side of South Ten Mile Drive, the entire length from Missouri Boulevard to its terminus in the vicinity of Grace Episcopal Church, I believe, right where it intersects with Highway one-seventy-nine. Be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item twenty-nineteen dash zero-three-one.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen, motor vehicles and traffic by addition of no parking areas on West Main Street adjacent to Ware Avenue.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, this issue was brought forward by residents of the Paddle Wheel subdivision area. They were concerned about issues with traffic entering and exiting Ware Avenue from West Main. After discussion and two meetings with Transportation and Traffic Commission meeting, it has been recommended that we remove one parking space either side of Ware Street on West Main, on the north side of West Main. Staff be happy to answer any questions.
Just a comment.
Yes.
I just wanna commend staff and also the committee, because like Britt indicated earlier, they spent two meetings talking about this, so this was something that the committee had thought into this entire process, so I just wanna say, great job to Britt and to the committee for hearing this. This took a lot of time to get to where we're at here, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item twenty-nineteen dash zero-three-two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, approving various documents and actions in connection with issuance of bonds for the Capitol Mall project by the Industrial Development Authority of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Mullin.
Thank you. This is a series, a package of agreements to be approved by the city council, which will allow the Jefferson City Industrial Development Authority to issue bonds related to the Capitol Mall, TIF, and CID. The package, the, sorry, the agreements that are being approved by this ordinance, the first one is a trust indenture between the Industrial Development Authority and UMB Bank acting as trustee. Essentially, this governs how UMB Bank as trustee would administer the bonds. This approves a financing agreement between the city, the Capitol Mall, CID, and the Industrial Development Authority, in which the city pledges TIF revenues and to pay off the bonds. The next one is a bond purchase agreement between the city, the CID, and Stiefel Nicholas and Company, wherein Stiefel will act as, agrees to act as underwriter for the bonds and purchase the bonds for resale on the bond market. The next agreement is a continuing disclosure agreement, in which the city agrees to make continuing disclosures about the finances of the city through the municipal regulatory, sorry, the Municipal Securities Regulatory Board. And then finally, a tax compliance agreement between the city, the CID, and the IDA and trustee, in which the city pledges not to take certain actions which would affect the tax-exempt status of the bonds. And finally, there's a form of a preliminary official statement, which essentially is a report on the financial health of the city that is used in the marketing and initial offering of the bonds.
I hope you've reviewed all one hundred and seventy-five pages and.
Over the past month, I have.
And you've recommended approval.
Yes.
And we have representatives here that can answer any other technical questions?
Yes, Mr. Rich Wood from the law firm of Postenelli, they represent the developer on this deal, and they are, Mr. Wood is available to answer any questions that you may have for the developers' side of this project.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to bills pending. Twenty-nineteen oh-one-nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Bartlett &amp; West in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars for the Clark Avenue and Dunkland Street intersection project.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, as the clerk stated, this bill would authorize a contract with Bartlett &amp; West for the design of a roundabout at Clark Avenue and Dunkland Street. As the council is aware, this project was identified in the most recent half-cent sales tax project as a joint project between county and city, and this is the next step in that phase, after the completion of a traffic study to determine that the roundabout is the most feasible and best long-term solution for the intersection. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Graham.
So, this is a joint project between the city and the county for the half-cent sales tax, is that correct?
I believe that to be the case. I apologize, that's, this isn't normally my area to cover that, but that is my understanding.
Councilman Prather.
So, we have a county person here? Is that correct?
Okay, that's, I'm happy to see his head shaking and that I was correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Did you mention that the study, or traffic study has already been done, and it has been determined that it would merit putting a roundabout there?
That is correct. A traffic study was conducted of this intersection, and actually of the entire corridor from McCarty Street through this intersection, looking at not only this particular intersection, but how it would interact with future improvements at the highway ramps, and, you know, we believe that this is the best solution for the intersection, not only for today, but into the future.
To Councilman Graham and his other hat, do you know of any talks by the Lincoln University with regard to the vacation of Chestnut?
I know we still have some serious concerns about Chestnut Street and the traffic that comes down Chestnut Street, so I know there is still conversation, there is still concerns about that traffic that's on that street, so.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'm prepared to vote on this. We'll call please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley, Hussey, Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward, Wiseman.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Ward, Wiseman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 2019-020.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with SAC Construction LLC in the amount of $1,727,388 for the Sewer Main Rehabilitation 2019 project.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Yes, as the clerk stated, this is a construction project which would line some sanitary and stormwater pipes throughout town. The sanitary storm is being done to eliminate the inflow and infiltration of rainwater into our sanitary sewer pipes, thereby reducing our treatment cost, and this, that is the bulk of this project. A little over 600,000 of it is rehabilitating stormwater pipes throughout town, which have been found to be most cost-effective, as opposed to replacement of those lines. The stormwater money would come from the half-cent sales tax. The wastewater fund would fund the balance of the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley, Hussey, Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward, Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, 2019-021.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Vizu Sewer of Missouri LLC in the amount of $168,900 for the Sewer Main Rehabilitation 2019 project.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, this bill would authorize a contract to rehabilitate manholes within our wastewater system. The project is funded with wastewater funds, and is similar to the previous one to eliminate inflow and infiltration into those manholes, thereby reducing our treatment cost. Be happy to answer any questions.
A question from Councilman Kimna. Okay, Councilman Graham.
I'm looking at the bid and Contract 1 and Contract 2. Could you explain the difference to me, because I see the S and K was the lowest bid on Contract 1, and then it looks like Vizu Sewer was the lowest bid on Contract 2.
Correct. What we did is we bid these projects, we bid three separate projects. One was the lining project, that's Contract 1, for the wastewater. Contract 2 was the rehabilitation of the manholes. Contract 3 was the lining of the stormwater. Contracts 1 and 3, it was envisioned that we could have up to three separate contractors doing this work, the way it was bid, and Contracts 1 and 3, SAC, which was considered low bid, not considered, they were low bid, and they were awarded in the previously read bill, and then the manhole rehabilitation, Vizu Sewer, was low bid for that portion of the project, so it was split up into two separate contracts.
So there would not be a lining of the sewer?
They, Vizu Sewer would, will do the manhole rehabilitation, SAC will do the sewer lining, and one was done in the previous contract, or previous bill, this is this bill.
Okay, got you. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hensley, Hussey, Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward, Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 2019-022.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving a first amendment to tax increment financing contract by and between the city of Jefferson City, Missouri and Capitol Mall, JCLLC.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This is an amendment to the tax increment financing contract between the city of Jefferson and Capitol Mall, JCLLC. 2014, the city entered into this agreement regarding the Capitol Mall, TIF, and CID. These amendments to this agreement would allow the bonds previously discussed in Bill 023 to be issued. The original contract in 2014 did not contemplate issuance of obligations using the TIF as the source of funds to repay those obligations, so this makes the necessary changes to allow the issuance of the bonds. Once again, Mr. Wood from Postenelli, representing the developers, also here to answer any questions that you may have for the development team on this.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Moulman? Seeing none, I very much appreciate your attendance, and it looks like we're, you're going to get off free of any questions.
Always a good thing.
Roll call, please.
Hussey, Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward, Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley. Motion passes. Item 2019-023.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the nuisance code pertaining to the maximum permitted sound levels in public parks to allow better enforcement of noise level violations within the parks.
Mr. Moulman will handle this one.
Thank you. This ordinance changes the regulations regarding maximum permitted sound levels. Currently, activities that are conducted in public parks are exempt from the noise regulations. I believe that the Parks Commission received complaints about activities that are being loud and affecting residential, surrounding residential neighborhoods, and this is the attempt to address those, some of those concerns. What this does is that it maintains the exemption from the noise regulations for activities conducted on public parks, but only during the normal operating hours of the subject park. And then it goes on to provide that if an activity is being conducted in a public park outside its normal operating hours, in order to exceed the generally applicable sound regulations, there will need to be a specific waiver or sign-off by the Parks Director, either through a license or permit or other writing, that would allow someone to exceed the generally applicable sound regulations outside the normal operating, outside the normal operating hours of the park. It also provides, generally, for outdoor events that are conducted to a city-issued license or permit, that those activities are also exempt from the noise regulations. This ordinance essentially flips the generally operating standards and says that the generally applicable noise standards will apply unless that license or permit issued by the city allows a noise in excess of the generally applicable noise regulations. So essentially, what we're doing here, kind of shorthand, the way I understand it, is that we're changing kind of our base understanding of how outdoor events, either city-permitted events or events inside the parks, we will allow for appropriate events to exceed the noise regulations, but only when the department has an opportunity to look at the event and judge whether or not that event is something that's appropriate to have an excedence of the generally applicable noise regulations. If not, then the generally applicable noise regulations would apply.
Okay.
I don't know if I made that, all that, all that clear, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Graham.
I understand the concern. I think the concern is coming from, from what I've heard, mostly from McClung Park, and it's when individuals have parties late at night. My question is, who's going to actually go in with the decimal reader or whatever to say how loud that it's going to be? And then the other statement that I have is that I don't think it's more so the noise or the music that's been played inside compared to the people who are gathered outside in the parking lot that may be playing music that the neighbors will hear. So it's a twofold thing. I really don't think that it's all of the music that's coming from the inside, but it's more of the people who are hanging in the parking lot playing their music, so who's going to, who's going to be in control of?
So, the police department is the, is the agency that enforces the noise regulations, so when events are happening inside a public park, I would see the enforcement mechanisms being a cooperation between parks and the police.
And if they determine that it's not the loud music coming from inside the building, but the people on the outside, then what happens?
I would say that they would inform the people that are, you know, making the noise that's violating the ordinance, that they are in fact violating ordinance, and ask them to turn it down, disperse, take care of the problem. If not, then they would have, they would have reason to, you know, issue citations or whatever it may be. But essentially, as of right now, police would have no authority to go in there and ask people to turn down the music, whether it's coming from inside the building or out or from the parking lot, because all activities on public parks are exempt from the noise regulations. Here, the difference is that when it's outside the normal operating hours of the park, police would then have the authority to ask them to comply with the noise regulations, whether it's coming from inside or out.
Yeah, I mean, I support the bill, I mean, most definitely, but I just want to go on record saying I think it's that it's most of the people who are outside playing their loud music, in which those homeowners do have a right to be in a peaceful and quiet environment, that's, especially, you know, late at night, so I think it's more of the people who patronize whatever event that might be at McClung Park.
Yeah.
The outside people.
I believe that the, this ordinance would give the police the appropriate tools and authority to help address those neighboring residents' concern. Right now, we just have to say, sorry, we can't help you because the noise is coming from a public park.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward, Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley, Hussey.
Motion passes. Nothing on the informal, moving on to item 15, Resolutions, RS 2019-3.
A resolution adopting the 2019 Title VI program, including Title VI nondiscrimination, limited English proficiency, and public involvement plans for Jeff Tran.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, as part of our ongoing effort to comply with federal regulations, this is a policy that needs to be reviewed each year, and be happy to answer any questions, but I will admit I have limited knowledge on the subject.
Would anybody like to question the limited knowledge, Mr. Smith? On this subject matter? Seeing none? Roll call.
Take a motion. Take a motion.
Okay, I need a motion to bring this on the table?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now.
I'll get a roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward, Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley, Hussey, Kimna.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution passes. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other subject matter.
We don't have any.
We don't have any, it looks like. 17, council staff discussion, presentation topics, none. 18, new business, no new business. 19, unfinished business. I want to thank everybody for their patience with me, and especially the clerk, who, my side's getting sore from nudges, but she made it easy. She's been nudging me. I appreciate the clerk tonight, and with that, I'd open to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.